Evening. It is, sorry, Thursday.
Geez, Kevin.
Thursday, December 12th at 6:30 PM. This is the Olentangy Schools Board of Education's regular meeting. I call the meeting to order. Ms. Hapfield, please call the roll.
Mr. Barts?
Here.
Mrs. Feasel?
Oh, here, but my battery is very low. I just got a message.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
And Mr. O'Brien?
I am here. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, okay. It's open now? Yep, it's charging. Thank you.
All right. First item is to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the agenda?
No.
All right, seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we have our first presentation item. The Heritage Elementary Choir Service Project, Kate Minici. Is that right? One of the choir directors, please come up.
Good evening. Thank you for having us this evening. Thank you. So I, first of all, just want to thank you for listening to our choir this evening. I know you're probably wondering where they are, but you'll be seeing a video of a performance that they did this weekend, this past Saturday. And I also want to thank my principal, Mrs. Susan Fisher, or Stom Wilson, for encouraging us to share what our group has been doing. And Susan Fisher, who is standing next to me, is co-director of this choir. So our fifth grade choir at Heritage is exclusively for fifth graders. We meet in the mornings at 8:15, which is not unlike most of the elementary groups in the district. But what sets us apart is, first of all, that we focus on just the fifth grade students and also that our primary purpose, although we perform, is to connect with the community. So our students know when they sign up for fifth grade choir that there will be a service component, and we use our singing as an entry point to service. Over the last three years, we've been fortunate to create connections within the community at two assisted living facilities, one at Willowbrook in Delaware and one at the inn at Olentangy Trail, which is very close to Heritage as well. So what was special about what I want you to see this evening is that their director, Connie McNeil, came to me and also to Ms. Fisher last spring and said, "I love that your students are coming and spending time with our residents, and I love hearing them sing, but we have a choir too." And said, "Next fall, I'd really like to see us do something together." And of course, Susan and I said, "Yes, 100 percent. That's something that we want to do." So this fall, part of the preparation of the choir, along with getting ready for our school sing-along and Veterans Breakfast and other events at the school that will build community within Heritage, they've also been working on two pieces that the Willowbrook singers were also preparing. And this Saturday, when we got together, not only did they sing for each other, but they sang with each other, which was incredibly special. So when Ms. Wilson suggested that we speak tonight, I said, "Well, what sets us apart and what makes this group special is that time that they spent together." So I think you'll learn more about our group if you see the experience rather than hearing them this evening, because they sound great, but that's not what makes them special.
Boom through the window, up on the house, down, click, 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 down to the chimney with good Saint Nick. Ah, yah, yah, ah, ah, the star, ah, who's the charlie? Chant, make sounds out of the ocean, make sounds out of the sea, shen, mien, tien, tien, shen, shen, go, she, go, she, go, she, go, she, go, she, she, ah, go, she, go, she, go, she, she. Oh, bird of the red-nosed reindeer, had a very shiny nose, and if you ever saw it, you would even say it glows. And on, ee, yah, ee, yah, oh. Get on this marmee, cat, wait a minute, wait a minute. Let's go to our senior member, Charlotte. Charlotte at 102, what animal did he have?
A pig.
A pig, I should have known. How many of you all eat like a pig?
Oh, yeah.
How many of you keep a bedroom that looks like a pig's thigh? Yes. Mothers, dads, can you verify that fact? Yeah, all right, they do. All right, let's hear it. And on this marmee, cat, a pig, ee, yah, ee, yah. Oh, you, oh, you're a special star, forever, baby, a pretty, 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 pretty girl. Oh, you're a pretty, 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 pretty girl. America, America, our children's grace on you and me, and now they're going, 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 see, to shine. (singing) A long, 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 so they can see your face. A long, 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 now, don't you stay from the green tree, now, once you're ready, you know it, you must know how you are, the best thing that I've ever seen. We're so pretty, we're so pretty, young, we're so pretty, New Year. Good tidings we bring to you and your kids. Good tidings for Christmas and a happy New Year. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Everybody a merry, wish somebody a merry Christmas. Merry Christmas.
So I have a question.
You never get to leave before Mrs. Feasel asks a question.
So you did this on a Saturday. How did they all get up to Willowbrook?
Their parents.
Oh.
They're amazing parents. And we have about 40 students that come each week, and we knew that we would not get 40 students on a Saturday afternoon. About 25 of our students were able to come. But they know they're still in choir, even if they missed an event.
Do you have any other events planned for the future?
We will go to the inn at Olentangy Trail in the spring and do something similar. And they'll sing at the sing-along the day before winter break, next Friday.
Good. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next presentation item is the Equity and Inclusion Update. Dr. Jackie Merkel, please come up.
Hello, good evening. Hello. I just want to apologize in advance, I'm a little bit sick, so if I start to have coughing, just please excuse me. I'm so grateful to be here representing the curriculum team and the district's Equity and Inclusion initiatives. Tonight, I'm going to be highlighting five specific areas of focus for 2019, 2020. The first area is recruitment and retention, which, as you know, has been a focus for us for a long time. But one thing to highlight is that we recently entered into a partnership with Otterbine University that is a Grow Your Own Educator Pathway, and we received the Human Capital Grant Scholarship. So as you know, Olentangy and Otterbine University are both highly committed to growing the number of teachers in our workforce. Specifically, we're cognizant of the underrepresentation of ethnically and racially diverse people in the field, including those who speak multiple languages. So in November, Dr. Jack Fetty and Kristen Bordage spearheaded an effort to write a grant through the Ohio Department of Education, and we were awarded that grant for $35,000 in partnership with Otterbine to support our Grow Your Own program in Olentangy. So what does a Grow Your Own program entail? Well, for us, it's going to mean identifying more students, including our ethnically, racially, and linguistically diverse students, as candidates for our Teacher Academy Pathway. It will mean infusing more culturally responsive teaching practices into that Teacher Academy Pathway, offering an opportunity through College Credit Plus for students to gain exposure to the teaching profession if they are unable to enroll in Teacher Academy, providing professional development around implicit bias during interviews and the evaluation process to continue the growth we've seen around hiring educators of color as led by Todd Meyer. The second initiative is around community outreach, and so I wanted to highlight the One Community Conference, since that's coming up on February 8th at Olentangy Orange High School. Our theme for this year is inspiring a community of change makers, and we are proud to welcome our keynote speaker with the support of an Olentangy Education Foundation grant, and his name is Matthew Kaye. Matthew is an author and an educator from Philadelphia who focuses on creating supportive environments where difficult conversations can thrive. At the conference, our offerings spread across kindergarten through adult sessions. This year, we will offer the most sessions we ever have with 73 different workshop options. 16 of those are specifically for kindergarten through second grade, third through fifth grade, or middle school students. 28 of those workshops will be led by Olentangy educators or administrators, and we will feature six student keynote presenters that represent three of our four high schools across the ninth through 12th grade gamut, and then seven workshop sessions that are either led entirely or co-led by middle school or high school students. So we're very proud of that. Last year, we had approximately 475 attendees. Six years ago, we started with less than 100. So we've been very grateful for the board and district leadership team's support of the conference over the years, and we're very proud of how that's grown. The third area of focus to highlight is around student voice. And so a new initiative this year is we have started a Student Equity Steering Committee. So this committee will be run by our District Diversity Coordinator, Heather Cole. We have selected four students from each high school to represent a cross-grade level group. The committee intends to provide leadership opportunities for students in the area of equity and inclusion, as well as to ensure student voice is heard and used to promote positive culture at the building and district levels. The fourth area of focus is looking at leveraging data towards an inclusive excellence, and I wanted to highlight two specific data components there. The first is our Culture and Climate Data Surveys that we give every other year. So we, last year, we gave the surveys to staff at all levels, and we had about 1,200 staff members that completed it, as well as students at the high school level. I then went and created comparative reports for each building to look at, so they could look at three years ago compared to last year. And there are three specific areas, I think, that deserve specific and special attention in terms of positive growth. The first is when staff were asked about how comfortable they were facilitating discussions around bias, stereotypes, or teachable moments when conflict arose, we had significant growth across every single category of diversity, showing an increase in confidence in our staff. Second is when students were asked about how often they make friendships with peers that are different from themselves, their responses grew from 39 percent saying that they actively made those friendships in 2016 to 72 percent saying that they do so last year. So that almost doubled. And then when our students were asked how often they learned about or saw visual representations of diverse people in their classrooms, they reported significant growth across almost every single indicator of diversity. So we're really proud to see that. The second data component that we looked at, or that I'd like to highlight today, is our AP Advanced Placement Interest Survey. We had about 1,900 students that completed that from ninth through 11th grade, and the purpose of that survey is to identify historically underrepresented groups for advanced placement options. This year, we identified over 80 students compared to last year, where we only were able to identify 42. So we almost doubled the number of students that we identified. I was able to create specific reports and data profiles for each one of those students and then meet with each counseling team to discuss the students individually before they entered pre-course scheduling with those students. We will also be using this survey as one identification tool to capture students interested in becoming teachers who might enjoy Teacher Academy. And right now, AP is just kind of our first stepping stone. We know that there's a lot of other wonderful areas of opportunity, and we're planning on expanding that in the future. The fifth area I'd like to highlight is around curriculum integration, specifically the auditing of district purchased resources. So the curriculum team and the instructional technology team is currently undertaking an audit of our current district purchased resources, and one of those components is to ensure that district, I'm sorry, diverse people, perspectives, and topics are available to students throughout the arc of their learning experiences. Additionally, this includes a revisement of current purchasing procedures to ensure that the review process includes looking for stereotypes that might be present in resources. Led by Peggy McMurray and Bill Warfield, they initiated the purchase of Fontis and Penel interactive read-alouds for grades K through 3, and soon to be added, the 4th through 5th grade will be following, which significantly increases the number of diverse representative texts in our elementary libraries. So Heather and I continue to be proud to represent Olentangy in this fashion, and we thank you for your time here today.
I love the data points that you have started with, so you've got your basis of comparison.
Yeah.
That's huge strides.
Thank you.
Very impressed.
Yeah, and if you can attend the One Community event in February?
It's great.
It is an incredible event to go to. I've always, I've always learned something from that event.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. All right, the next agenda item is the Board President's Report. I just want to take my time tonight to recognize and thank Mr. Roger Barts for his service on the board, and actually, not just service on this board, but service to Olentangy. When I first met Roger, he was the president of OHS Boosters, trying to get turf across the finish line.
Good times with the board then, weren't they?
Yeah.
And Roger, early on, we saw in Roger, you know, what we see in every really good board member is incredible leadership, great judgment, ability to collaborate with people. It's been really an honor and a pleasure to serve with Roger on the board and wish him nothing but the best. I would open up, you know, to any other board member if they want to say comments before Roger's last meeting.
Yeah, keep it brief, okay? We've got really important business to take care of.
Well, I still have a lot of professionalism that I didn't absorb from you, so.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Thank you, though.
I'm going to, I'm going to miss you.
Well, thank you. I'm going to miss all of you.
Roger has a common sense approach to this position that is most welcome, and it's been great serving with him, and yes, he presented to the board turf ideas before he got onto the board, and sometimes it was kind of contentious, but we got it done.
Was it, Dave?
Dave and I had to sit through a lot of turf meetings.
That was way too much effort for that.
But I, in an email conversation, I made reference to the fact that Roger had said to me one time, and I'm pretty sure you were serious.
I probably was, so go ahead.
That you ran for the board because of the turf discussion, and I'm glad you did.
Well, I answered the call when someone said that you should apply for an open spot, but little did I know, you always learn more when you're actually behind the chair, behind the desk.
That's true.
Well, and I know the Facilities Committee is like one of our hardest-working committees here, and you've served on that, and it's been very appreciative for our planning going forward.
I appreciate that. I mean, if you'll give me one minute, I'll share one quick story. I promise not to bore you. It's when I, when I got the appointment, I remember going home and telling Drew and Cherry after interviews that I had been appointed, and Drew, at the time, was, I think, maybe a freshman or something like that, maybe a little younger, and he said, "Well, let's call Grandma and Grandpa." My mom was a 35-year educator, and my stepdad was 40 years in education. So we got him on speakerphone, and Drew said, "Hey, Grandma and Grandpa, guess what? Dad got appointed to the school board," and my stepfather said, "On purpose?" So that's how it started. But it's been my honor and a real pleasure to do this, and I hope I've done enough to leave it better than when I got here. But I'll still be around. I know Mr. Gordon is applauding my return to the Facilities Committee, but we'll see, we'll see how that goes. I've got to have a little bit of time.
My last comment is, the executive session will never be the same.
Right.
I do like a good.
That's a common sense approach.
Is that, is that what you're calling? Okay, all right, good. Well, thank you, all of you. I appreciate it.
All right, well, thank you very much. Superintendents' Report, Mr. Rafe.
All righty. Thank you, thank you, thank you again. Jackie, great job, as always. Well, well done, and really, continue to be very proud of our efforts to chase inclusive excellence. So just as always, going to start off with a few living-the-mission, good things that we have going on in the district. Here we have a senior at Orange High School who created their own nonprofit organization called BYEZ. It's trying to increase in the number of women in science and engineering, so they're going down and visiting our elementary students, and obviously STEM careers and STEM pathways continues to be a major focus in education, so congratulations to Ashwin for getting that done. Very proud. We want to announce to the community that we have launched a microsite. I love it when I say words that I don't know what they mean. A microsite to help our community understand the needs of the district and why we have a levy on the ballot in March. So thank you to our communications team for developing that. It is a site rich with information about all issues, all of the items related to the March 17 ballot issue. As we all know, we are not allowed, and as a district team, to, all we're allowed to do is promote the levy. The board, as elected officials, can certainly encourage people to vote yes, but we, as district officials, can only encourage people to become informed about the issue, and we have confidence that we've got a great story to tell with that. So thanks, it's very much appreciated that that information's out there. So our winter concerts and events, holiday events, are all just in full swing. Everything can be found, a full list of those can be on the website. It's a great time of year. If you do have an opportunity to pop in and see any of our performing arts, just again, when I talk about our entire academic program, our performing arts is certainly a very, very strong piece of that, so we're very proud of the opportunities that are afforded our kids, and then their time and talent that goes into that is just second to none, so. So we had students from Liberty Tree Elementary Schools art be featured at Nationwide Children's Hospital, and they're focusing their efforts on mental health in their new pavilion there, so I'm very proud of John Juravich and his crew for getting that done to highlight his, the work of his students. The students there spend time talking about what makes them feel hopeful and happy, and you know, obviously, that's a big piece of mental health. We're going to actually be trying to, Coach Day's foundation is partnering with Nationwide Children's Hospital, focusing on mental health, and so since he's a district resident, we've had some preliminary conversations about how we can partner with them to become involved with their foundation because of their focus on mental health, so. Quickly, a couple action items. We do have three retirements of long, longtime Olentangy employees. Becky Schmidt at Wyandotte, Paul Seifert at Cheshire, and Mark Blakeman, who was previously an administrative, maintenance administrator, worked with Jeff Gordon's team, and then went back into the, into the association there. So they're all retiring at the end of the school year, so I wish them well and congratulations on that retirement. And then there is one item there for your approval, easement with Redwood USA. They build apartments, they're building some apartments and some other commercial property on land. It is south of Home Road, west of Liberty Park, and east of the railroad tracks, so it kind of runs all along those tracks there, but there'll be some, some commercial properties, some apartment, apartments there. And in order for that project to move forward, they needed an emergency access easement to our property on Liberty Middle School. So we do have a road that extends back there that will extend to meet their property. In exchange for the easement, they're going to build some baseball dugouts valued at about $20,000 on the Liberty Middle School property.
Could you ask them to level the Liberty Middle School baseball field, because it's a swamp and gets wet? So maybe throw that in, guys, you know, just for the giggle factor.
Mr. Gordon's all, I'm sure he, you know, he might get.
He's working some magic. We've got lots of dirt lying around this district. That's awesome.
So, and then I also wanted to take some of my time, look at that, there he is.
That's when I was 12.
Hey, is that?
That's such a good picture, though.
I know, look at how white I am now. Goodness gracious. I'm like, grow a beard, and kids want to tell me what they want for Christmas. I look like both my kids, just sometimes a little angrier than they are.
So, you know, I, obviously Roger's been on the board here since 2014. He was very instrumental in the passage of our levy in 2016 and formulating that whole package. He's been very supportive in redistricting and his work in facilities. You know, and so Roger and I, our oldest boys are the same age, both graduated in 2010, and he was very involved in Olentangy and led, led the formation of the Orange Athletic Boosters, which should be the model for athletic boosters in the entire country. Your leadership was instrumental in getting that off the ground and going. We would not have turf at Orange, Liberty, or Olentangy if it weren't for Roger's efforts. It's interesting, and Liberty kind of started first with their efforts to get their turf going, and we're having some problems, and then Roger and his team got it done at Orange more quickly, and I think that certainly motivated the Liberty people to get it even more quickly. So they definitely wouldn't have it if you hadn't moved it forward at Orange. You know, and I'm obviously highly appreciative of your leadership on the board and your role. I'm always hyper appreciative, especially of board members who were part of the team that hired me, so I thank you for, well, you know, everybody's entitled to one mistake.
It's the least we could do against, you know, such strong opposition.
I did, I did call Dr. Lucas, and he extends his well wishes. He did make sure I remind you, as I told you earlier, that if you knew how to pull paperwork and file in a timely manner, the board may have looked different during his tenure, and we may not have had the person that Mrs. Patrick replaced. He who shall not.
He who shall not be named?
I thought I'd throw that up there for you.
I called Dr. Lucas the day after the paperwork was due and said, "Okay, I'll run." He goes, "That's really great, you missed it." And he had another name or two he threw at me, but that's okay, we won't use that.
You know, but I guess there's one, and we've had a lot of great conversations, and I've always really appreciated your wisdom and your guidance and your support, you know, and there was one incident, I don't know that you would remember it, but we had a conversation about a specific coach who I always thought you were incredibly supportive of, and in your role as booster president, maybe, maybe early on your board term, but came to know that later on, that's not really how you felt about the coach. And it was that conversation that made me really, really realize, this is a guy I can really trust, because he wasn't going to let his personal, his personal feelings, his personal agenda, get in the way of the good work that needs to be done on behalf of all the kids. Because as we know, sometimes we deal with people in this business that have a personal agenda. So I, that was one of those moments in time, I always think about you and knowing that more than anything, I knew I could trust you, and that you were always going to be honest with me, and you were always going to be straightforward, and if you agreed with me, you'd know, I'd know, and if you didn't, I'd know it. But we always had an excellent relationship, so I appreciate that. So with that.
Oh, it's the Rolex.
Yes, it is, it is, it is.
It's not the Rolex?
No, not the Rolex.
Oh, gun it.
You know, we're just responsible, but I do have, first of all, token of our appreciation.
Wow, thank you.
I am so sorry, Roger.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it. Thank you very much. I really appreciate that. Thank all of you for that. That's beautiful.
That's nice.
And I just got fingerprints all over. There you go. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
So with that-
And it's got the new logo on it, which, awesome.
As usual, and with our important dates coming up, it's amazing that here we are, second quarter's over, half the year, and off we go.
I've got that January 9th date.
Any questions?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Rafe?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. All right. Our next agenda item is Treasury Report. Ms. Hatfield?
Absolutely. So I just wanted to give you a quick update that on the ballot item, we have all of our paperwork submitted, all of the receipts notated from the state regarding our special need status. So we are in good shape to proceed in that manner. We have finished our fiscal '19 audit. At this point, we are not ready to announce or to share the results other than I can say, we've had a really good audit, and we're excited for those announcements to be made in the coming weeks. So more to come on that topic, but our, our department's very proud of what you'll find when that's released to the public. And then tonight, we have just our general appropriation adjustments and meeting minutes to be approved by the board to meet our ORC requirements. We have several donations for approval. We have a xylophone from Arrowhead Elementary PTO to, excuse me, Arrowhead Elementary School. Verizon donations for recognition of volunteer hours from Michelle Olum and Linda Taylor going to Indian Springs Elementary School. Books for the bookroom by Mr. and Mrs. Howard Robinson to Sciota Ridge Elementary. Spiritware vinyl products and lateral files from Teresa Sherman and Jennifer Bishop going to Oasis and the Business Academy. Donation of dollars for conference nights and appreciation week dinners and luncheons from Meyer to Olin Tangi High School. The Tennis Hut donated dollars to the Olin Tangi Tennis Boosters. We have miscellaneous furniture and supplies from Ms. Laura Webb to Olin Tangi Berlin High School. And donations to Olin Tangi Special Olympics in various amounts from an anonymous donor, from Ronald and Barbara Saunders, and from Buffalo Wild Wings Foundation. So we're always grateful for all of those donations, whether they are materials or dollars. And we also value all of these folks who donate their time and efforts to the community and our district as well. And with that, I would just close by saying thank you, Roger, for, you know, really wanna echo the sentiment. You are very highly thought of by the entire board, and we will miss you. So thank you for your service and your friendship.
Thank you, Emily. I appreciate that.
Not the entire?
Huh?
Not the entire board?
Okay, good. Thank you.
We'll see them all.
My reputation remains intact. Must be all those executive sessions.
That's true.
Are there any questions on any of those items?
No.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Public participation. Do we have any com, any?
No, there are none.
No names?
Okay.
All right. We have our first discussion item. It is community reinvestment area exemption for Robert's Family Group of Companies. Rob Platt from the Delaware County Economic Development Area. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, board members.
Hi.
Rob Platt, Delaware County Economic Development. And I have, the item before you tonight is a project that we've been working on throughout this year. Actually, the company came to us late last year, and we're just trying to wrap this up as, before we head into 2020. This is at 268 Greif Parkway. This is, you'll know this as the State Auto Data Center there on the north side of Greif Parkway. And that went in, in about 2008, that property was purchased. State Auto used it for a number of years. Originally, there was an incentive granted through the CRA program for 75% for a period of 10 years. Now, by law, the CRA allows for up to 15 years. And that, the company coming in that submitted this application, Robert's Family Group of Companies, as you'll look through the paperwork, they actually represent about 16 different companies, came to us and wanted to use the, the data center. It needed remodeled, revived. To be honest with you, it's sat empty for two years now. State Auto has not used it. And we're coming to the end of the original 10 years. So they have asked for an extension, not an increase, in the incentive, just simply an extension of it to the full 15 years. So an additional five years, and that would start in 2020, ending after 2024. So we spoke with Ms. Hatfield and Mr. Rafe, and went back to the company and said, "Well, we need to make sure that we increase the amount of the service payment going to the school district first and foremost." And they agreed to that. So of the amount of taxes that are foregone, you will receive more than 50% of that amount to the tune of a little over $48,000 a year as a direct payment from the company, which is an increase from what State Auto was doing if you were to approve this. This CRA is kind of unique because it does require trustee approval at the township level. So this has been before Liberty Township trustees. They did approve it on October 7. The commissioners have it on their agenda for this coming Monday, the 16th. I do want to call out a couple of things, and really why this project is important to us. And you'll know that there are some vacant parcels on the south side of Greif Parkway we can share, and you're probably aware of this, and we won't share more than what we can. But we do know that one and maybe even two additional data centers are looking in there. Certainly, we don't want a vacant one sitting in there, so we were happy to welcome the company in there. And they bought the property for a little over $4 million, I think. Total investment is $9.4 million. So they've dropped about $4 million, or a shade more, into the property to get that back up to where they could use it. So we were certainly happy to see the investment in our company. As you look, or as our, in our community, as you look through the company listing, I will point out, one of their, I think, 16 companies that this data center will support is the R&amp;L Trucking Company out of Wilmington. And they specifically wanted to come to our community. So we certainly wanted to support that. There was a number of documents sent to you. We are asking for your approval through a resolution for the extension of that exemption, and also that would approve a amended school compensation agreement. In the interest of full disclosure, I do want to let you guys know, on the document, although you don't sign it, there was the, on the actual agreement with the company that the Board of Commissioners would enter into, and although it's minor, I do want to make sure that you're aware, on page three of that document, right in the middle, I did not have the employee numbers for the company, for the state. I do now. So originally, there were zeros in that middle paragraph. I do, it is important to point out, they have 200, 2,248 full-time employees, 163 part-time, for a total of 2,411 employees in the state of Ohio. Now, this is a data center. Obviously, we don't have a significant amount of company or employees there. Their original application, they committed the two full-time employees there. Again, this, this would be a data center type level. And that was, would have been by December of this year. We put in the agreement that it would have been by March 31st. They have exceeded that and gone to four employees by September of this year. So certainly, they're making an investment in our community. We are encouraged and excited about the project and happy to have them. Respectfully ask that you approve a resolution this evening to grant that exemption, exemption, and to support the school compensation agreement as amended. I'm happy to answer any questions.
You had said that the payment to the district would be $48,000.
That's correct.
What was it before?
It was just over $42,000. So there was an increase of about $6,500, somewhere on 15%.
And Mrs. Hatfield, the amendment of this, then, that we can do this without violating any of the previous agreements? It just supersedes the previous agreement that we had in place with the old ownership?
It's just extensive.
Extended.
Correct.
New ownership group?
Five years. Yes, correct. Yes. So, so the, when you read the document, it shows the full 15 years. But the language within it shows that it was created in 2008, and we're just extending it for five years.
Okay.
People probably don't even know that that exists back there, you know, where Greif is.
Yeah, yeah.
And so how much more land do you have back there that can be, you said you've got some plots.
Yeah, there, I know there's three parcels back there. I looked at one, I wanna say it was 40 acres that I recently got a phone call on. So, so I think we're gonna see some movement back there, too. So.
Well, that really was the driver of bringing this forward, was the fact that they've got two other companies interested in data centers.
Yeah.
Makes it a tough sell if you got an empty data center sitting there. So once we had another group on the line for this, kind of tried to make sense to knock those dominos down.
Yep.
Yeah.
Good stuff. Yep, thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
And there's no kids living there.
Right. That's even better.
All due respect. Thank you all.
All right. I will present the board action items. Actually, I'll present them separately. So Board Action Item A is to assign President Pro Tempore for 2020 organizational meeting. I make a motion, we appoint Dave King in that role. Dave is our most experienced president pro temp.
Pro temp.
True, true, it's true. I think I could do it with my heart. Motion, please.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion on Board Action Item A? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bart?
No hard feelings about TERF.
Yes.
No, good.
Yes.
It's okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
Number 10, Board Action Item B, which is to approve the resolution approving the granting of a community CRA exemption for Robert's Family Group of Companies. The item we just discussed.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right. Please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Bart?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Hatfield, you're gonna present the Treasury Action Items.
Yes, please. I would like to present Treasury Action Items A through C for approval, please.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bart?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Rafe, please present the Superintendent Action Items.
Yes, sure. I'd like to present Superintendent Action Items A through E for approval.
So moved. I'll second.
Any discussion? All right. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bart?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
Could we please have the Chief of Administrative Services present his action item?
I know we don't hear that name often.
We'll look forward to presenting to you in the future. I would like to present Chief Administrative Services, Action Item A, for your approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. Bart?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, entertaining motion to go into executive session, as permitted by Section 121.22G1 of the Ohio Revised Code, to consider the employment of public employees.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All right. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. Bart?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. So we will be coming back to this room, but we'll not be taking any further action tonight. So you're welcome to stay. There'll be nothing else but a German when we get back. All right. Thank you.